Reagan is out. We'll, we'll see what happens here. Let's stand the same pledge to the flag. Pledge of regions.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to re-bank to everyone, this, this video is audio recorded and may be used on our Facebook page. At this time, are there any public comments not on the agenda? Were you?
Nope.
No? Okay, go from there then. This time we'll read the consent agenda. A, city claims to be paid. B, Three Forks Arena Board Claims to be Paid. C, City Claims to be Paid Due to Timeliness For Eight Thousand Five Hundred Ninety Seven Dollars and Sixty Cent. D, City Claims to be Paid Due to Timeliness For Forty Four Thousand Two Hundred Eighty Three Dollars and Eighteen Cent. B, City Council Minutes of One Fourteen Twenty Twenty Five, Joint Three Forks Fire Board and Council Meeting and One Twenty Eight, One Twenty Five. F, Zoning and Planning Board Minutes, One Twenty Seven For One Twenty Seven Twenty Twenty Five and One Twenty Nine Twenty Twenty Five. G, Service Agreement with Absolute Drywall Incorporated for City Hall Remodel For Seven Thousand One Hundred Ninety Two Dollars and Eighty Cent, Signed by the Mayor on Two Eighteen Twenty Twenty Five. H, Change Order for Harmon Enterprises Construction Incorporated For Adding The Tin From The Sealing As A Chair Rail For Three Thousand Nine Hundred And Sixty Two Dollars And Eighty One Cent. I, MC, wholesale Incorporated, City Hall Lighting For Four Thousand Seven Hundred And Ninety Nine Dollars. J, Change Order For Pierce Carpet Outlet For Repairing Subfloor Before Installation Signed By Mayor On Two Nineteen Twenty Twenty Five. K, Draw Number Twenty Seven For The Water Project Totalling Twenty Nine Thousand Four Hundred And Sixty Five Dollars And Fifty One Cent. All From ARPA Minimum Allocation Grants Or MAG Funding. L, Draw Number One For City Hall For State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act, House Bill Three Fifty Five In The Amount Of Eighty Thousand Four Hundred And One Dollars And Eighty Two Cent. M. Pardon me? Draw Number One For The Library From State Local And Infrastructure Partnership Ship Act, House Bill Three Fifty Five In The Amount Of Thirty Four Thousand Six Hundred And Fifty Five Dollars And Seventy Cent. And Award Of Garbage Service For The City Departments To L and L Site Services, There Were No Other Bitter. And O, Award Of Park Moing And Weed Management Proposals. Council, Is There Any Discussion On This? We do have Riley here representing B and B Don Moing. And it looks like from the bids that you were awarded the bid, so. If, if you want to see the bids, it's in our.
I see.
You see them?
Well, I see them on my.
They're in the consent agenda packet.
But I can read them off for you. No?
Not on my account.
Okay, so that's.
I read them.
That's I, I've read them too.
So everything's down there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any?
Riley, I'd like to tell you that I really appreciate the good work that you and your dad do.
Well, we appreciate it.
I kind of watch, I'm, you know, like down there at the museum and see you going back and, I mean, thank you, I appreciate it.
No. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of compliments.
We're good.
Any other questions on the consent? I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
My second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any other public comment on the consent?
No.
No. Okay, then we'll have the both then. Reagan?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yep.
And Ed?
Yes.
Okay, that part is done. Our next item will be public hearings. A Public Hearing Decision On The Zoning And Planning Board's Recommendation On Two Twenty 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 Five For A Conditional Use Application For A Cycle Studio By Kathleen McCord On Lot Four, Block Fifty Eight Of Milwaukee Land Company Second Edition Commonly Known As Six, Sixteen Fourth Avenue East. Okay, so. Reagan, did you want to read the?
Yeah, what part am I supposed to read here? I don't.
Well, usually we'll have you read where, where it starts off, February eighteen twenty twenty five, just what the recommendations were. Page, pages one and two.
So, I have the staff report.
Of the staff report?
Yes, this is the staff report. Okay. The application, do I have to read the first part? Application Request, you already read that. Background, Kathleen McCord Has Applied For A Conditional Use Permit For A Home Occupation At Six Sixteen Fourth Avenue East. She Wishes To Convert A Garage Into A Cycling Studio With Four Bikes. This Lot Is Seven Thousand Square Feet And Contains An Existing Single Family Home With A Detached Garage Which Is Three Hundred And Fifty Two Square Foot In Size. The Garage's Footprint Will Not Be Expanded. The Surrounding Zoning And Land Uses In All Directions Is Residential And Single, Single Family Residential. Staff Report, Section Eleven Twelve Dash Two Of The City Of Three Forks Zoning Ordinance Identifies The Approval Criteria To Be Used For Conditionally Used Permits As Followed. A, The Use Conforms To The Objectives Of The Growth Policy And The Intent Of The Zoning Ordinance. Home Occupations Are A Conditionally Permitted Use Within The R District. B, Such Use Will Not Adversely Effect Nearby Properties Or Their Occupants. The Proposed Use Would Meet All Zoning Regulations If The Staff Recommendation Is Approved. The Zoning Regulations Are Presumed To Mitigate Any Conflicts With The Neighboring Properties. C, Such Use Meets Density Coverage Yard Height And All Other Regulations Of The District In Which It Is To Be Located Unless Otherwise Provided For In This Title. The Proposed Use Would Require Four Parking Spaces, Two For The Single Family Residents And Two For The Proposed Cycling Studio. If The Staff Recommendation Is Approved, The Proposed Project Would Meet All The Zoning Requ- Requirements Of The R District. D, Public Hearings Have Been Held After The Required Legal Notice Has Been Given And The Public Has Been Given A Chance To Be Heard Upon This Matter. Public Hearings Have Been Appropriately Announced And Scheduled For Thursday, February twentieth twenty twenty five At Six Thirty P M With The Zoning And Planning Board. Public Testimony And Written Comments Will Be Taken And Considered At Each Public Hearing. Conclusion. Staff Recommends Approval Of This Conditional Use Permit Application With Six Conditions. The Applicant Shall Provide Four Parking Spaces On The Property. The Existing Fence And Chicken Coop Shall Be Moved To Allow A Minimum Of Thirty Six Linear Feet Of Parking Space To The West Of The Garage So That Four Spaces Can Be Accommodated. Parking Spaces Shall Be At Least Nine By Eighteen Feet In Size. The Use Shall Be Limited To Three Customers At A Time. The Cycling Studios Operating Hours Shall Be Limited To Six Days A Week, Seven A M To Eight P M. Signage Shall Not Be Permitted. The Parking Lots Shall Be Paved. And then what else do I read?
If you go back to the very first page, it shows the conditions that were actually approved.
Okay, so then when we, at the zoning and planning board, we approved different conditions. Some are the same. Um. Sorry. Uh, so, so the zoning and planning board moves to approve the conditional use permit for Kathleen McCord With The Following Conditions. One, All Statements And Explanations Of Use Presented In The Application For Kat McCord Are Made Conditions Of The Approval. Two, The Applicant Shall Provide Four Parking Spaces On The Property With Gravel. The Existing Fence And Chicken Coop Shall Be Moved To Allow A Minimum Of Thirty Six Linear Feet Of Parking Space To The West Of The Garage So That Four Spaces Can Be Accommodated. Parking Spaces Shall Be At Least Nine Feet By Eighteen Feet In Size. The Use Shall Be Limited To Three Customers At A Time. Uh, sorry, I haven't been numbering them. Five, The Cycling Studios Operating Hours Shall Be Limited To Six Days A Week, Seven A M To Eight P M. Six, Signage Shall Be Limited To A Two By Two Foot Sign. Seven, No Employees. Eight, Only Two Classes Per Day. And nine, Doors Of The Garage Cannot Be Open From Seven To Nine A M. And that was five to zero vote on that one for the zoning board.
Okay. So we did have, I will read, we had the two letters for and two letters yes, which I'd like to read. And the first letter is from Gordon Lane at Janus Cockburn, who lives at Six Ten Fourth Avenue East. And it says to the member of the Three Forks Zoning And Planning Board, Additional Use Permit For Cycle Studio At Six Sixteen Fourth Avenue East. We are writing To Express Our Opposition To The Application For A Conditional Use Permit Submitted To The Three Forks Zoning And Planning Board By Kathleen McCord. We own property immediately adjacent to hers at Six Ten Fourth Avenue East As Well As Two Vacant Lots Across The Alley And Behind Her Property. While We Don't Necessarily Have A Problem With Her Home Business Idea, The Main Reason For Our Objection Is Based Upon Our Concern About Parking And Increased Traffic On The Alley Behind Our Respective Properties. The Design Sketch That Was Provided As Part Of Her Application Shows Four Parking Spaces Allocated To The Driveway. Space Between The Garage And The Alley. Uh, space between Garage And The Alley. Certainly, currently, There Is No, Not Enough Space To Park Four Vehicles. They're Based On City Required Design Standards For Off-Street Parking Unless The Applicant Intends To Remove An Alley Fence And A Chicken Coop That Was Behind By The Previous, Left Behind By The Previous Owner. Even Then, We Wonder Where The Residents Of The House, The Employees Of The Business And The Customers Will Park Because There Is Simply Not Enough Parking Space In Front Of The House On Fourth Avenue Or Behind The Garage Off The Alley To Park That Could Be, There Could Be Up To Six To Seven Vehicles In Total. The Applicant In Her Letter To The City Stated Providing Five Parking Places Would Not Be Reasonable Request Because Her Family Is Growing And Cutting Our Yard Size Would Be Impractical And Thus Unnecessary. She Also States That At Most My Services Will Run For A Couple Hours A Day Having Minimal Impact On Parking For Surrounding Residents. The Application Plan States That The Business Would Be Open Six Days A Week From Seven A M To Eight P M. It Is Unclear And Unstated How Many Perspective Customers Would Use The Facility At One Time On Any Given Day. Another Concern We Have Is Whether The Vehicles Might Be Parked In The Two Vacant Lots Which We Own Opposite Side Of The Alley Which Are Currently Unfenced. We Shouldn't Have To Worry That Vehicles Might Be Parked There Or In Our Garage Driveway Next Door Out At The Convenience Or Out Of Convenience Or Due To Lack Of Space Anywhere Else. We Don't Want To Have To Put Up A Fence Along The Alley To Prevent This From Happening. The Applicant Has Stated That Parking At A Nearby Public Park Can Be Done And Attendance Can Walk To My Studio. This Appears To Be The Only Potential Solution To Parking Problem. Aside From These Concerns, We Would Expect The City Council To Perform Their Regular Due Diligence With Respect To Building And The Parking Design Standards And All Other Required And Applicable Permits Just As They Would Do Any Other New Business Requesting Conditional Use. That's the first one. And on my comments on that one, as I was reading it, most of the concerns were taken care of. Uh, the, we. I highlighted where the, uh, Janus and Gordon wrote, There Would Be Up To Six And Seven Vehicles Total. According To The, The Plan, There Is Only Going To Be Four And The Parking Spaces Are Going To Be Nine To Eighteen Feet. Uh. The, the Chicken Coop Would Be Moved To Make All These Things Work And Then The There Was An Objection There Too On The Time Of Day And How Many, It Would Be From Seven A, A M To Eight P M, Kat. How, How Many Cycles Are You Going To Have?
Four bikes.
Four bikes?
Yeah.
Okay. Does the council have anything to say on this?
Do you want to read the other ones and then go to other comments?
Our next one Is written from Daryl Prokop And Chris Spire. And It Says, We Are Writing To The Three Forks Zoning And Planning Board To Express Our Opposition To Application For Conditioned Use Permit For A Cycle Studio At Six Sixteen Fourth Avenue East. And Upon Reading The Application, There Is Not A Definite Plan Or Solution For Parking. Operation Days And Hours Running Six Days A Week And From Seven To Eight A M As Stated In The Application Are Not Conductive Or Favorable In Residential, In A Residential Neighborhood. We Also Question The Noise Level In The Studio. While We Do Not Necessarily Have Any Issue With Her Home Business Idea, Our Objection Is Based Upon Concerns Of Parking And The Early And Late Hours Of Noise Levels. We Have Two That Were Written For, For The Cycle Shop And It Was Written By Crystal Turner. And It Says, I Am A Neighbor Of Kat McCord's And Would Like To Submit This Letter Of Support For Her Request To Operate A Home Business. I Know Kat Is Very Professional And Caring To Her Clients. I Can Think Of No Reason Why She Should Not Do The Same For Her Neighbors. As Someone Who Would Love To Have Another Exercise Option Than Three Forks, A Class Mentality Is Something That Would Not Only Benefit The Clients But Our Whole Community. I Feel Our Little Community Needs A Variety With The V Forty Two Gym, Yoga, Jutsu, And Now Cycling, Especially During These Months When We Can't Get Outside As Easily. Regarding Parking, I Realize Quite A Bit Is Required Off-Street. However, Many Of Those Who Would Attend The Class Like This, Like This Would Walk To Or Carpool With Another Person Taking The Class. As You Know, The Regulation Has Been Discussed Many Times As Requiring Accessory Parking And Is Already In Process Of Amendments. Thank You For Your Consideration And I Urge Your Decision To Recommend The Approval For The Application. And Our Last One Is Written By Sherri Brown. Dear Members Of The Zoning And Planning Board And City Council, It Is Without Reservation That I Recommend Approval Of The Conditional Use Application To Kathleen McCord's Cycle Studio. I Have Known Kathleen Or Kate For Several Years As A Client Of, Of Personal Training Business At V Forty Two And As A Friend. I Also Had The Privilege Of Assisting Her And Her Husband Logan In Purchasing Their Home In Three Forks. Kate, Kat Is A Considerate, Thoughtful And Caring Person. She Operates Her Business And Her Life With Consideration Of Others And At The Forefront. She Has Built A Business Supporting So Many People In Our Community And Runs Her Business And, And Life With The Utmost Integrity. She Treats People Kindly And Operates Enthusiastically And Is Selfless. I Believe Her Small Cycle Studio Will Be A Great Asset To Our Community And With Minimal Impact On Her Neighborhood. She Approves Low, She Proposes Low Volume With A Very Limited Schedule. She Is Contentious On The, With Others And Oh, conscientious With Others And I Believe She Would Address Any Concerns If They Arise. Kat Has Invested In Our Community And Has An Ethical, Considerate Business Owner And She And Her Small Business Or Businesses Are An Asset For Our Community And Residents And I Encourage You To Approve The Conditional Use Permit. And Those Are The Letters. I, I only have one question. Yeah. And It Was Concerning The Prokop And Spire. Will The, Will There Be Any Noise From And Out Of There? Those Kind Of Bikes Always Come With Muffins.
Wrong bikes.
What, You Have Music Going Or?
There Will Be Music Going. Um, yeah, The Garage Is Insulated, The Garage Door Is Insulated. Um, And I Wouldn't Be Operating At Like Ingrigiously Early Hours Or Incredibly Late Hours. I, I Put Those Times There Because I Don't Know Yet What Two Most Popular Times Will Be. Whether It's Before Work, Lunch, Lunch Hour, After Work. Um, But Since I'd Be The Only Employee, I Only Have So Much Energy And I Don't Know, Maybe You've Taken A Cycle Class But Doing Two A Days A Lot Anyway. Some Days It Would Be One And Some Days None Because I Do Have Another Business. Um, But As Far As The Noise Go, It Removes Me To Keep The Noise To A Minimum Because My Husband Works Nights And Sleeps During The Day. So Caring For My Neighbor's Peace And My Own Family's Peace Is Definitely Important. Um, But So It Would Probably Be The Equivalent Of Like If Someone's Working On Their Car In The Garage And Has A Radio Playing.
Okay, thank you. And Then Another Thing That I Saw In The Cockburn Lane Was Employees, You're Going To Be The Only Employee, Right?
Hmm.
So That Was What Their Concern Was, Is Where Are The Employees Going To Park Plus Anybody Else?
Yeah. Also, There Is No Coop. When We Moved In, I Think The Prior Owners Had Sold The Chicken Coop. So There's No, No Chicken Coop.
Okay. Does the council have any questions?
Jean? Um, I guess, This Is Just For Clarification. It Says The Applicant Shall Provide Four Parking Spots. Is That Because Of The Ordinance? And But She's Only, I mean, She's Limited To Three Customers At A Time. So There Should Only Be An Open Parking Spot.
Well, There's Two For The Residents And Then Two For The Class. So If Her And Her Husband Were Both There, They Would Have, That's Where The, The calculation Comes From Of Four.
I Went Over And Looked Today. Uh, You Know, There's A Space Going From The Lane Property Going South. Uh, There's The Fence That Goes To The Garage And Then The Fence That Goes Towards Dave Reynolds' Property. So Now From The Fence To The Garage Is That One Spot Or Two?
Um, It's Going To Take, There's A Diagram In There Of, The Fence Would Probably Have To Be On The One, The Lane Side Have To Be Taken Out Or Moved To The End Of The Garage. Um. This One. Um, So Here's The Lane Property Over Here. Um, So The Fence Would Have To Be Moved Back So There'd Be Eighteen Feet Here So A Car Could Pull In. And Then There'd Be One, Two, And Then Three And Four. So There'd Be Two That Would Fit In Front Of The Garage.
Oh, okay.
So Just That One Side, I Think Is How It Looked Like With, With The Drawings.
All right. That Makes Sense Now. Because There's A Big Tree There Besides The Garage Which Is Going To Limit Parking, I Mean A Little Bit.
On The Other Side.
Yeah. Okay.
So Just Be Moving The One Fence Back And Have To Get The Eighteen Feet.
And So The Reason For The Garage Door Is Not Being Open From Seven To Nine Is Music?
Yeah.
Either That Or You're Trying To Sweat It Off.
Sweat It Off, Yeah.
Matt Jones Wanted To Sleep During That Time So He Didn't Want Anybody In The Neighbors To Have Noise That Early. So That's Why I Was.
Because He Doesn't Sleep In.
Yeah, Yeah, He Doesn't Sleep In.
Kat, Do You Have A Heated Garage?
Uh, It's Not Heated, No, No. Just Self-Heat.
So When They Get In There When It's Sunny The Whole, They're Going To Have To Peddle It Hard.
Will Be Peddling Hard. And It May Just Not Be A Business That Runs In The Wintertime Or Just Put Heaters In There. There's Two Large Windows On Your Side Of The Garage That Could Be Open Though.
Well, I'm Sure Your Dad Could Come And Deal With That So.
Yeah, That's True. I Did Have A Question About If Any Businesses In Three Forks Had Ever Had Like An Amendment Made Regarding The Law, The Parking Ordinance. Um, We've Discussed Parking At Stevenson Park Is A Potential Option And Having People Park There And Walk The Distance Down The Alley. I Don't Know If That's A, A Thing Or Not But I Thought I'd Ask.
The Way I.
Go Ahead. It's Public Park, Right?
Well, But I, But I Think Isn't This To Say That If You're Going To Do A Business At Home, You Have To Have So Much Off-Street Parking. So If You Go To Stevenson Park, You're Still Going To Be Parking On The Street, Correct? That's The Way I Look At It.
Yeah, So I Guess That Was My Question If There Was Room For An Amendment There Or How, I Don't Know How Those Things Work.
You Could Ask For A Variance From The Variance Board. Since It's In The Ordinance, You Have To Have The Off-Street Parking. The Variance Board Would, Would Hear That.
Okay.
And Decide If They Would Grant That Or Not.
Okay.
I Do Know That, I Don't Know Who Brought That Up. I Do Know, And Kelly, Correct Me If I'm Wrong, But When We Had The Meeting For Concord Harvest Baptist Church, There Wasn't Going, They Were, Parking Wasn't A Big Concern. So At The Time, I Brought Up The Fact That It Was On Sundays. And If We Haven't Had An Overload, We Could Park At The Public Library. And At That Time, The Board Did Not Have A Problem With That. If It Didn't Conflict With Anything To Do With The Library. And Then They Came To The Library And Then They Approved It.
And It, And You Can Do That If It's With, If It's Off-Street Parking Within A Certain Distance And The Other Party Signs A Perpetual Agreement To Let You Park There, Then That Is An Option. But It Has To Be Off-Street Parking. So If A Neighbor, I Think It's Within Three Hundred Feet, I'd Have To Look That Up. But If Someone Around You Had Extra Parking And They Would Sign Something Saying You Could Use It, Um, Then That Is An Option To Come Up With The Parking. That's What Happened With The Church.
Yeah. Is There Any More Discussion? Do We Have Any Public Comments?
Does Anybody Online Want To Make A Comment?
No, Nobody's Online.
There Is But They Are. Oh Wait, There Might Be.
No, We're Good.
Okay.
Thank You.
Okay. Uh, If There Is No More Discussion, The Public Has Already Made Their Comments. Uh, Do I Have A Motion To Accept This?
Um, I'd Like To Make A Motion To Approve The Conditional Use Permit Kathleen McCord Using The Nine Conditions That Were Listed In The Motion From The Zoning And Planning Board.
We Moved It Seconded. We'll Have The Vote. Reagan?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Ed?
Yes.
Motion's Passed. Thank You.
Thank You All For Your Time.
Good luck.
Dean And I'll Be Up Over There With Our Headbands On Working Out.
Good, I Excited To See You Over There.
Yeah.
Okay, At This Time We'll Have A Report Of Officer Kelly.
Um. Okay. So MMI Has Given Us The Preliminary Numbers For Health Insurance. They Say It's Going To Probably Go Up Between Nine To Thirteen Percent Again This Year. It Did Not, That's What They Projected Last Year And It Didn't Go Up That High. But That Is What The, The, What They Project For This Year Too. Um, And Then Our Cell Tower Lease Is In Its Last Fifth Year. We Give Them Two Times To Renew Five Years Without Going Through Anything. It Now Expires In Twenty Thirty. They're Wondering If We Would Like To Open Up Negotiations Now So That They Can Go Back And Have A Fifteen Year Lease Instead Of Five. And I Said I'd Ask You Guys If You Have Any Concerns Wanted To. Um, My Thought Is We Ask For More Money For The Cell Tower Lease Because It's A Hot Commodity Now. Um, We Get Pretty Good Now But We Could Go More. But The Last Time We Did It, It Was A Lot Of Negotiation And Took Quite A Long Time Because Susan Made A Very Good Agreement With Them Because Every Time Someone Comes And Wants To Take Over Our Lease, They Can't Believe Our Terms That We Have. So They Don't Want To Take It Over But And Susan's On Camera So I'm Guessing She Has Something To Say.
Only If They Want A Longer Lease And We're, We Were, We Are The Ones Who Negotiated A Much Shorter Term. And The Reason We Negotiated A Shorter Term Last Time Is Because The Industry Is Changing So Much. We Wanted To Be Able To, To Get, To Have A More Frequent Review Period Of The Leasing. It's Not That We Aren't Going To Lease Them. It's Just When You Lock In At A Certain Rate For Fifteen Years, You Don't Have Any Idea How The Industry's Going To Change And What's Going To Happen With The Economy.
Sounds Like Having A Shorter Term And Multiple Reviews And Negotiating For More Money Sounds Great For The Town.
Mm-hmm. And They Wanted To Start Talking Now Instead Of Waiting Till Twenty Thirty Because They Have Leases That They Sign With People Up There. And I Think We Could Get More Money Than We're Getting Now Based On Other Towns So. If You Guys Want To, We Can Open That Line And.
What's On Your Mind For More Money?
Well, We, We, We Get, Um, I Think This Year It Was Almost Fifteen Thousand And It Goes Up Three Percent Every Year. But Other Communities Are Getting, Some Of The Other Communities Are Getting Over Twenty Thousand A Year. Um, And That's One Of The Things We Switch Depending On Where We Want To Put It. We've Been Putting It In The Flood Mitigation For A While. I Think This Year Not Giving It To The Trails, I Don't Think Because That Was The Marijuana Tax. Um. It Went To, It Might Went To The Flood, I Think Went To The Flood Again This Year Because We Weren't Sure What Was Happening With That. So I Think It Went To The Flood Again This Year. But We've Mixed It Around To Different Entities. It's Kind Of Like A, Whatever Needs The Money That Year, We Can Give To Them. So, But If We Can Get More Out Of It.
Could We Bring This Up When We Have The Budget Committee Meetings?
Well, They Wanted To Know If We Wanted To Start Negotiation. So I Thought I Could Throw It Back At Them And Say, What Are You Offering? And Just See, Because The Last One Took Over A Year To Get Negotiated. So I Mean, It And just see, because the last one took over a year to get negotiated. So I mean, we can start it, but it's not something we have to do immediately.
I'd say how to make us an offer. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Go ahead and start.
See if we can't squeeze a turnip a little bit.
And I think that's all I have right now. Yeah.
Susan, do you have anything?
I do, but I'm gonna ask Susan Hayes to turn on her um audio, which is that Susan, I'm just trying to figure out who I'm supposed to write the site title opinion to.
Um, so it's ARPA. I can, so it's hmm by DNRC and ARPA. I can send you that, what's on the contract.
That's, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I'll send that to you.
Okay. Um, and then I would tell the council that um I don't, we know, we've worked through the impact fee committee, um, a, a amended report. Where um you're gonna start seeing some zoning coming forward, but I've um modified the format. So that might be delayed by another month for purposes of the starting the process to start looking at all the chapters on the zoning. I think we're got everything done for well thirteen's easement. So that's moving, I think I've got my part done. I did about Susan Hayes. She'll tell you. Um, and then I, so I think we're kind of caught up except for I have some older things. Like now that we're getting close to the um floodplain stuff, I've gotta finish up the um the, the, you're gonna see probably next month, the um payback agreement. That's been pending for a long time. We do payback agreements for ten years. And we've delayed entering into this until we could have the Hennessy's, till we had the chance for the prop, the Hennessy's to get paid back because there will be property out of the floodplain. So there you go.
Any questions to Susan?
What was the part about the zoning?
Oh, um, their chapters are start, are just, are starting to roll forward and get reviewed and ready to go, but um, um, I changed, I I demanded a change in the format of the way the zoning is being proposed. So that's gonna take a bit of rewriting.
So the chapters we see in zoning and planning, once we approve them, they come to city council for final approval.
Reagan, we, we met on February fourth and uh there was quite a bit of going back and forth on what to change and how to do it. So Susan's working on that.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, that's all the report of us officers tonight. Reports from council committees, if any. Okay. And unfinished business, the flood mitigation project update. Kelly?
Um, we went, I, I went to Missoula. We did our presentation. Um, it actually went off better than I thought it would. So that was good. And um, we're getting ready, New Orleans will be in May. Um, they, we had a meeting with the Department of Emergency Services, since the money goes to them and then they give us the money on the flood project on how to start doing draws for the flood mitigation project, because we've been, we've been paying the bills to Great West. And now we can recoup some of that money. Um, so they uh went, walked through how to do the draw process for them. So we'll start seeing draws on the flood mitigation project. Um, and Jeremiah is still working with MDT um about the size of culverts. We would like three. They're talking maybe four smaller ones instead of three great big ones. So it's going back and forth there. Um, we've got a meeting tomorrow with Headwaters, DNRC and Great West to talk about the project and where we're at and where we need to go and, and the past of what we've done so far. So.
It's all going good.
So far.
Yeah, uh, at our last meeting, you said, have they done our bore samples yet?
They were out, I believe they went out and did the bore samples, but we haven't heard anything back yet. So.
Okay. Uh, any questions to Kelly? All right, our next one would be water project update. Susan?
Hello. I have a few different things for you, but first we'll talk about the distribution project. We had the bid opening for that on February twenty-sixth. And you guys got eight bids for the distribution project. Uh, that's replacing the cast iron main in town and adding some looping on some of the lines. Uh, my engineer's estimate was two point two to two point four million. And the low bid came in at one point nine two million for the base bid plus the three additive alternates. So that we split it up into schedules into additive alternates just in case uh bids came in higher and we wanted to be able to award as much of the work as possible. Um, so that was the reason for splitting it up. After talking with Steve about your public works director about additive alternate number three, which was some fire hydrant replacements. Um, he felt like he and his crew, they can replace those hydrants for less money than what the bid price was. So um, based on that conversation and uh, those were kind of an add-on at the end of just some other things we could put into the project and the funding that you have available still in ARPA. Um, I, I agreed with that. Um, and so I put the award letter, the recommendation to award letter together to award uh, the base bid and the first two additive alternates. Your low bidder was Emmering or Emmerine, I'm not sure how it's pronounced, contracting. They're out of Anaconda. And Great West has worked with them before when they were operating under a different name in Sheridan. Um, Collette Anderson in her Helena office, she was the project manager on that job and she was pleased with how that went. I also talked to the public works director as well as um the RPR, who was on site in Stevensville for a large water distribution project that Emmering did. They both had great things to say about the two guys. Um, the president of the company is Kip Shumway and his project manager that he has called out is Nick Boss. Um, and then I also spoke with the city of Dillon, who had them do a project a few years ago, and I spoke with their public works director. Again, um, nothing negative. Um, they said they were good at addressing any concerns that came up unexpected field conditions, which of course can arise in a distribution project like this. So based on the bid price, uh, checking references, Emmering submitted all of the documentation that's required, both at the time of bidding and then within seven days, we require a qualification statement and all of that. Um, my recommendation to award then is to Emmering for the base bid plus additive alternate one and additive alternate two. Um, we didn't get this on the agenda for this evening just due to timing, but uh Susan Swimley has said that we could set up a, a Zoom council meeting for Friday potentially. I'll leave that up to you guys. But whenever we're able to public notice and have a vote on this, uh, the recommendation to award is ready. I'll just update the date on it. Um, pending any questions any of you have, of course. So with that information, does, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the process and where we go from here?
I do. This is Kelly. It was completely my fault that it's not on the agenda. Susan sent it to me and I did not read her whole email where it said, please have this on the council agenda for Tuesday. So I didn't get it on the agenda. So.
No big deal. I also didn't double check the agenda. So, which I normally do. There's lots of fingers in the pie here. Without Crystal, there's a lot going on for you guys. So. But not a huge rush. Um, so whenever you guys are able to schedule a meeting, the recommendation to award is ready and I'll just update the date on it.
My suggestion was if you, if three of you can find a time on Friday, we can do forty-eight hours notice, which is all it takes. Um, but Kelly is leaving on a much earned vacation next week. And so we didn't really wanna leave this to fall to Wally in the next weekend when Crystal's only in two hours, three days a week. That was why I, it's why I picked Friday for you.
Anytime on Friday, it's fine with me. I don't know about you, Jean.
I can make this Friday work too.
Actually, I'm gonna be in Wyoming Friday.
Oh, it's okay.
How about Thursday, Jean? I'm gonna be in Wyoming.
Okay.
We only need three.
I can come down on Friday.
I can be there also.
Same.
So what time?
I work in a shop, so somebody else should.
What time works for you, Roxy?
Uh, maybe two.
Two.
Everybody else?
Two for me, so.
Okay.
Here.
Yeah, probably.
And this coming Friday, correct?
This coming Friday.
Where's, where's the meeting gonna be?
We could do it downstairs because then we don't have to bring everything up here. We can just do it real quick downstairs. I'll email out the bed sheets and what I have. So you guys can all look at it. Um, but we'll do two o'clock on Friday.
But it's Friday the fourteenth?
Yes.
Did you get that, Susan?
Yep, sure did.
Okay.
Attend as well. Um, do you guys have any questions about that project? I, I mean, this is the ARPA money that needs to get spent this year. I think the timing is good. I think we ended up with good bid prices and all of that. Um, but if any of you have any questions about that project, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Jean.
Um. Do they have a problem and what is the start date and do they have a problem with that start date, the contract?
Well, we have to go through the contracting process, of course. You know, once you guys sign the, the notice of award, then they have, then we send them the contract documents that they need to sign. They have ten days to get them back and then you guys have to sign them. Um, and then we'll move to a notice to proceed after that. Um, I had told them we would, should be getting them the award this week and they should be working on a schedule. Um, they know it has to be finished in twenty twenty-five. So I would anticipate them wanting to notice a, a notice to proceed mid-April, early May. Um, and then the contract times will be a hundred and fifty days. We did adjust that based on comments during bidding. They thought a hundred and twenty days for all three schedules of work was kind of tight. Um, so we did extend that, but it stated in there multiple times that it does need to be complete in twenty twenty-five because that ARPA money does need to get spent. Um, it didn't sound like they had any issue with that. Um, but we haven't discussed the notice to proceed yet, just because we haven't given them the award. Yeah, so I, I will have that conversation with them.
Thing on the project's gonna be paving the streets, repaving?
Mm-hmm.
Where they dig up. Uh, and so when we talk a hundred and fifty days, we're talking five months from May, which is gonna put us into October, November. And so I was, that's my concern.
Yeah, and that's something that I, I've been thinking about and talking to other people in the office about because so the ARPA money, we're, they, they have stated that it needs to be spent by the end of twenty-five. But in a situation exactly like that, you know, it, it's always hard to say what we might run into during a project like this that could potentially delay things. And obviously, we don't wanna be paving, well, we can't pave in the wintertime. The conditions are unacceptable, right? Um, and so in a situation such as that, um, I would ask ARPA, you know, for the good of the project, obviously, we, we can't pave in November. Generally speaking, the temperatures usually are not warm enough. Um, could we delay that until conditions are more favorable in early, you know, spring of twenty-six? So the ARPA money is they've stated that communities need to spend it by the end of twenty-five, but the federal regulations related to it, you know, with that money is that the states had to spend it by the end of twenty-six. And so they've stated uh, an earlier deadline for communities to spend it, I, I believe, so they can potentially reallocate the money to other communities who would spend it. Um, I, I haven't had that conversation with ARPA yet specifically because it's still quite hypothetical, but I will be bringing it up to them at our next funding calls. Um, just to see what the feeling is on that. There are some city funds and contingency um, that we may or may not use on the project. Um, it's a good question, Jean, and I, I'm sorry, I'm giving you a lot of maybe this will happen and not a straight answer because I, I don't have one. Um, I, I feel like ARPA will be will work with us because you guys will have an existing contract.
You know, that you've considered that. And I mean, I just, I come up and say, oh, you know, and, and, you know, the the ideal thing would be is that it got done because there's nothing worse than a dug-up street during the winter and something, whatever, but yeah, but I understand if it couldn't.
Well, and if we're getting to the point where it's going to be of concern, I, I would push to have them obviously, they'll want to do all the paving at once, right? To only have their sub come in one time. But if it's getting to a point where that might not be feasible, I would strongly encourage them to come and do the paving that they're able to. Um, because they're going to do it sections at a time. They're not gonna open everything up at once, right? Um, so if it, if we're getting down to it and the weather is starting to turn and we're losing our paving window, um, that would definitely be a topic of conversation of we need to close up what we can. And then if there's a small portion that we're going to miss the paving window and it needs to be delayed into twenty-six, we can work with that hopefully. Um, but we can't just leave everything unpaved for the winter because they only want their sub to come in once. That's, that is not gonna work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions, Susan?
Do you guys want a quick update on your water supply project as well, as long as I'm here?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, twelve is the one that was completed last year and it's your two hundred gallon a minute well. Um, we're working on the design for the wellhouse and the connecting infrastructure for that right now. I'm hoping to have the design final um by the end of April to submit to DEQ. So we can construct the wellhouse and get that well connected to the system in later twenty-five, probably, I would guess fall sometime, um, depending on when we are able to bid it and what kind of bids we get on it. Um, so that's moving along. Um, well, eleven is the tank well. Uh, O'Keefe is just out there and camered that well last week. And they were going to do the pump test to verify that we're gonna get the production rate that we want up there of about seventy-five gallons a minute. Um, before we convert that to a public water supply well, it was constructed as a test well. DE, DEQ has said that that's okay, that we go ahead with that. Um, but we wanna make sure that it has the production that we're planning on there. They dropped a pump in there and started the pump test and found out that the pump wouldn't do the flow rate they thought it was going to, so they had to pull that out. So they're coming out next week with a different pump to try again, uh, to do that pump test. And that's gonna be a seventy-two hour pump test as required by DEQ. Um, hopefully that turns out fine. And if it does, then we'll move to have O'Keefe convert that well from a test well into a public water supply well. And then we'll go through the same process that we're doing with well twelve now and work to get it connected to the system. And then the last one, hopefully, that we've got going on, lucky number thirteen, well thirteen. Um, we're planning on getting a test well drill just to the south southeast, I guess, of well twelve, a little bit closer to Ridgeview subdivision along Kidd Road. Um, I'm working on getting an access permit from the county right now because we need to uh, have you guys build another access off of Kidd Road to get into that spot. It's just that low-lying area. It's mucky out there. So there's not a good way to just drive cross-country. We're also working on finalizing the easement with Three Forks Development. Um, Susan Swimley alluded to that. We're gonna get that back over to them for signature. So you guys have an easement there. Um, drill the test well, hopefully that's successful. And then go through that same process again and work to get it connected to the system. And once we get that far, and I'm, I'm hopeful this is all gonna happen this year. I mean, this project has gone on for a long time now. Um. We should be done with the water supply project um, as it was intended as part of the PER and looking forward to future populations. So we're making continued somewhat slow, but still continued progress on that front. If anybody has any questions about that.
Any questions?
So lucky thirteen's gonna be three hundred gallons? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Uh, I think it would be great if it was just another hundred gallons, but uh, I mean, shoot for the stars.
Well, Susan, thank you.
You bet. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we're new business. We don't have any, right, Kelly? Not tonight?
No.
Uh, is there any uh public comments or concerns? Yeah, we did get rid of the snow around the hydrants for you.
I saw, yeah. And then it melted.
Okay, Bayer and council announcements. I'd just like to uh ask anyone in this room if they've seen the guys going around with the new vector second water.
Yes.
And it's.
Oh, it was amazing.
And I'll tell you what Bob really likes. He was out there and uh, it's twice as fast as using the old back and and he did an amazing job the first morning on Main Street when the snow started mounting. I talked with Public Works and they said that at the end of this month, they plan on starting to jet our sewer collection system. We have about eight miles here in town. And uh, back in the day, window one, I used to call it the spring roundup. That's when, Jean knows what I'm talking about. Uh, but anyway, so they're working on that and they've got a lot of other projects lined up too. So they've, they've been pretty busy.
So the city is able to suck water out? So the city is able to suck water out of the street, is that what's?
Yeah, with that new vector that we have.
Okay, we bought it about a year ago.
Oh, good.
I should, uh, I should have him bring it, I should have him bring it to the council meeting when we get down here.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you folks haven't seen it, but. I, I was, uh, I was impressed with how it worked.
So just vacuums water and then they go put it somewhere else?
Yep.
And everything on it's hydraulic. And it just. It's amazing, it's just twice as fast.
What's the capacity of that tank?
The capacity is 500 gallons, now the trailer, Jean, was 1,000. But. We can suck up 500 gallons, get it back before the other trailer would be filled up, because of the suction on end. So, well, I seen them down in front of Security Bank and, you know, that was, that's a pretty good lake. And, you know, yourself, in the, in the springtime and summer, when we get those big heavy-duty rainstorms, lots of times down the, uh. The Ace Hardware, it's almost up to their door, and with this thing, we can just go right down there, attack it and get it done and get it out of the way. But, another thing that they have used for, uh, when they first got it, we had a, uh, a dig that we were going to do and the locates were done. And they do what they call pothole, and they use the, the air, air, steel air tubes. And they started sucking the ground out until they got down to the gas line and the power line. So they could see where they're at before they started digging, before we just have to scrape a little bit and get down there and dig. So this way they can find everything first before tearing it down with the ground, so.
That's pretty cool.
They use those to clean out like the storm drains and stuff too, or is it just like a pump truck?
Yeah.
The storm drains.
Storm drains, all of ours are French drains, which means they percolate back into the ground, so that's, that's nice. And, uh.
Melissa rains a lot.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Goes into the ground until the ground can't take it out.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, but those French drains were designed to at least have a drain within 24 hours.
Yeah.
They don't drain immediately, but this will help. Well, the, the problem was this time of year, the grounds are frozen.
Yeah.
Not that they're that, our drains are that fast, but I mean, they're really at a disadvantage this time of year. If you looked in the, uh, some of, from First Avenue to Fifth. Some of those drains been in the ground for. Forty years, 50 years. The wall nine, what's that? Longer, some of that paving was done in the 60s. So, with this, we can rehab, they can go in and they can put a stinger in the arms and roll everything out, before that, we didn't have that. We didn't do those things. So, uh. Trying to think of anything else, but, that's, oh, I've been in, uh, the city office. And it's totally, it's gonna be amazing when we get in there, and, uh, you guys are doing a good job. And Kelly, she's smiling, she's hardly wait to get in. The second coat of, uh, mud was put on the drywall today. And the third will be tomorrow and then they'll start sanding, the heat's already running to keep the drywall warm. And I was telling Jean about, and, uh. Heard about the heat system, I walked in there Monday and I went back and the guy was hooking this thing up where our old air conditioner was in the back. And it's a unit, it's about two feet wide and it's about six feet tall and it's on a stand and it has a heat pump. And a cooling system on it, so I asked him, what, what does the heat pump do, and he said, the freon, the cools the building will also heat the building. And then when it gets 20 below, that's when the natural gas will kick on and heat the building, so he says it's really, really efficient. So I was pretty excited about that, but it's gonna be really nice.
We're also gonna have insulation in the ceiling and in the walls, so.
We're putting R60.
We are.
R11 in the, uh, walls, which there wasn't any before. And R60, which is six, you know, 60 inches of fluff. And so, it's gonna be nice. Uh, our next project after Ryan's done and the baby's done is the. Electrical's done, it will be the flooring guy coming in.
They're saying at the end of April, they'll be in doing it through the first of May, or first of April, sorry, end of March to the first of April.
Oh, so that's when they're gonna be in.
That's what their plan is, so we could theoretically move in that first week in April, but I don't know that we're gonna be ready to.
If you noticed in the consent agenda, there was a change order and, and because the floor is so uneven in there. You get farther towards back and it gives us, plus, we found oak and different kinds of wood, wood from days past. And another thing that I thought was interesting was the furnace guys, when they were upstairs, they said there were two bullet holes through the tin. One of the pieces of tin, they figured George, they were 44 caliber, so I don't know what went on in there. If somebody rode their horse in there and shot their guns off.
Well, let's go with that. Oh, really?
So, there's a lot of history there, and Jean, I don't, do you know anything about the building, I was gonna get with Patrick and find out. You know, I've looked into that, trying to figure out, I, years ago, I asked some of the old timers, Boots Myers and Ralph Wilcox. About where City Hall was when they were growing up, and they said, they thought it was there. So, I mean.
It's always been there.
It's always been there for me, but I mean, I, I mean, that's.
I don't think it was built as a city hall, though.
I don't either.
Unless the city had a lot of money.
Because the museum right now, that building there and the plaza were built by, uh, Wilson, the architect from Bozeman. And the plaza at one time was noted has the Ruby Building. And so a lot of people say, oh, no, you mean the Ruby Theater, I said, no, that, actually, we got pictures of it saying it was Ruby Bill. But, again, none of the pictures show City Hall, so. They don't show any names on front of the street.
Yeah, we have a picture, I think, from 1917, but it doesn't have a sign on it. But it looks like the front's glass, like it would be a merchant shop, because there was a vestibule there, that's why the, the, um, it goes up when you first walk in.
Yeah, I can remember that, I mean, that used to have that, like that, but, I always thought that's what they meant, three forks to protect the door from getting blowed down the street by the man.
Tyler said with that tin up there, he thinks it was somebody that had money that built it, and the construction of, of the, the, the beams and stuff, they did extra, they did more than they would ever have to have done. So he thinks it was.
See, and I always thought that the tin ceiling probably wouldn't have been done for a city hall, and I mean, so.
And the, the extent that they did it, because it comes down as crown molding too, I mean, it wraps down and there's a big four-by-four piece in the middle that had some sort of a fancy light hanging from it at some point. Um, Tyler thought we could put it on the wall and put like a water fountain coming out of it, but.
But you know, the back of it was a real hole.
But the tin went all the way to the back.
Yeah.
The tin was all the way to the back.
You know, that was the ambulance barn for a while and the jail, and city stored the road grader in there, and it was just walls and a senior slab.
But it had a pretty ceiling.
Yeah. Funny, the way that.
Mm-hmm, it's gonna look all different, though, Wally and I picked the colors, gonna be purple? No, no, purple, my house all did purple, but not city hall.
Jean and I had my.
That's a good idea, though.
When I had my interview in 91 and I went back to be interviewed. Well, the judge's office was done and the sheriff's office, but the rest was just. Just a hole back there, and I couldn't believe how bad everything looked, and I thought, geez, but it's come a long ways. So, and that's all I have, does the council have any announcements to make?
Okay, yeah, I do. Okay, um, first, I want to talk about the chamber a little bit, because I'm super excited. We have four officers and six board members, so we are a full chamber for the first time in years. So it's very exciting, um, we have some really exciting, fun plans that we. Are going to do, we're meeting with Prospera and different, different places to start doing business trainings and all kinds of things for our businesses in town, so. We're very excited about that, um, we have the ribbon cutting for the shop pastry house on the 18th. So on Tuesday, everybody is invited, it's also a business mixer after the ribbon cutting from 5:30 to 7:30.
What are they cutting with this one?
Um, they just joined the chamber, so when businesses join the chamber, we do ribbon cuttings now.
Cool.
Um. 5:30 to 7:30 on Tuesday, the 18th.
So you're doing free samples.
She is gonna have food and, and beverages there, yes, she's very excited, um. Our chamber dinner is March 29th, it's gonna be out at the livestock auction barn. And that will be from 5:30 till 10, we're gonna have a live auction, um. A nice dinner put on by Nada's Night Out, um, dessert will be provided by Melissa and Busy Bee Bakery.
That's their grounds livestock dinner.
The livestock, yeah, the way out.
Okay.
Livestock auction way out, so there's gonna be a lot of space, we're gonna have, it's gonna be much nicer with lots of space for people. Yep, so that is gonna be very exciting and fun, I hope everybody can come to that. And also, um, I have. I'm trying to start, I'm not trying to start, I am starting a coalition, um, in the town of Three Forks, it's called Communities That Care. The introduction to it is gonna be on Monday. This Monday on the 17th from 5:30 to 6:30, it's gonna be at the Christian Center. Um, the coalition, um, is for children in the community and. It, um, is a framework that's developed by the University of Washington that helps communities prevent youth behavior problems before they develop. So, um, Galatin County got ahold of me, um, because it's like a county-wide thing. But she's doing each city separately, because Galatin County is so big and each city is gonna have such different needs, like. Three Forks is gonna have different needs than Bozeman or Valgrade, because we're much smaller and we have different needs, so. Um, if you guys would like to come to that, I would really love it, I will be serving dinner also. Um, and it's very short, so just an introduction to what. What we're talking about and what our plans are gonna be for the children of our community. And that is it.
Well, thank you, Roxy.
Yeah.
Anything else for the council? Okay. That'll be set, our agenda, our next meeting for agenda items will be on April the 8th, 2025. And, uh, do I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Someone, second.
Meeting is adjourned.